Welcome. We're going to call this committee meeting of the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee to order. It's Monday, March 22, 2021, at 6:03 PM. And we have with us today Ray Garino,
Here.
Sharon Gilio,
Here.
and Jessica Brown. We do have a quorum. We also have in attendance our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Anthony Parker, Assistant Superintendent Mario Andre, Gabrielle Bernardo, and Board Member Dottie Oden. And so we're going to go ahead and get started. So tonight, the first item on the agenda is the memo and approval of the 21st Century Research Project with Mathematica. So would you like to, the administration like to talk about that?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The purpose of the partnership with Mathematica and the 21st Century project is to conduct a study to implement the research in the effectiveness around continuous improvement systems, which consist of tools, procedures, and supports for improving the quality of services in after-school, for after-school staff, especially around social emotional supports. This is a two-year study. And what's really important, it's not a program, it's not a resource, but it's a way to rethink on how we deliver services. So we'll be receiving free professional development for two years through the Forum Youth Investments White Card Center for Youth Quality Program Insurances. So it's a really well-known center. It's nationally well-known. Mathematica is a national research tank that does a lot of work with the USDAOE. So we're really happy to have this partnership within Nashville. Again, it's not a program per se or a resource, but it's really going to shape our way of thinking on how we have continuous improvement. And the focus here will be on collecting data around social emotional supports. This is a grant that does not cost us any money. So we like those programs that we can actually increase our capacity, skills, and knowledge without costing the district any money. So we're really looking forward to this partnership over the course of two years and be more than happy to report out as the data comes forward. So it is our recommendation that you approve this partnership.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the committee members? Yes, Ms. Gilio?
My question is just, the 21st century that's mentioned in your documents, that's the same group that's been offering after-school support for years in the district, right?
Yes, that's through the leadership of Gail Casey. We just met with the USDAOE and Mathematica on Friday, but Gail Casey is spearheading this endeavor, and I want to thank her for her leadership. Unfortunately, she has a class tonight and couldn't join us to give a little more, but we're really happy with her leadership, and this is going to be a great asset to that program.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Garino.
Thank you. I just want to get some sense of the relationship between Mathematica and the district. Is there some kind of memorandum of understanding or agreement that you sign? I know you said it doesn't cost anything, right? There's professional development that's being provided to our teachers, and I guess we provide them with some kind of data, which I'm assuming is anonymous.
No, thank you for bringing that up. There is an agreement with Mathematica and how they conduct the research, where they'll warehouse the data, who they can share it with. Unfortunately, I did not share it with you, but I'll be more than happy to show you the agreement. But again, Mathematica is a well-known research company. They do follow all the protocols and adhere by policies as well as FERPA as well.
Will they be providing, like at the end of this, will they provide us with a report, some kind of report?
Yes, we're part of a national study, so we'll be one of six districts, I believe, in the country. And we'll, but we'll receive those reports once they're concluded. But we'll also see interim and quarterly reports from Mathematica over the course of two years. And again, I'd be more than happy to share any updated information on the research project.
Okay. And so this is for after-school activities, right?
Correct.
With 21st century. Okay, okay.
What's really nice about the research, again, is that it's a way to rethink on how we approach continuous improvement. So it's not a package deal, but it's really professional development on how we look at data, how do we improve, assess, and plan as we move forward. So I think starting with a small after-school group that we can actually learn from that, our building administrators, our PLCs, that we can probably replicate that process as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I think we also have a question from Ms. Oden.
Oh, thank you. I know back when I was teaching, we had 21st Century at Inver Street, and it wasn't always taught by teachers at the school. How are they gathering information from people that are not teachers? I'm having a hard time understanding the SEL, which some of these people might not be teaching in the classroom. I'm kind of concerned about what type of data they're gathering and how they're gathering it.
That's a great question, Ms. Oden. So the teachers or the 21st Century after-school staff are trained through Ms. Casey and others, so they are trained professionals working with our students. Along with Mr. Garino's point, I'll be more than happy to show you the data that they are collecting, but some of it is the profiles of our students, the schools that they're in, their grades, their attendance, and how well they're doing. So it is information that they could get from the building administrators, but again, we want to be looking at how are they functioning after-school programs, but also how does that impact their daily grades, their attendance, and their behaviors in class. So there'll be some kind of correlation on that. And again, I'll be more than happy to forward the data sharing agreement with you.
So let me ask, they will be interacting with the classroom teachers of these students?
They will be interacting, the PD providers will be interacting with our after-school staff, not directly with the classroom teachers. So the data around their grades or their behaviors in classroom will come either from the building principal or will pull it from our X2 system.
And are these people trained in SEL?
The service providers? Absolutely. Yep. They are, again, they're the Forum for Youth Investment White Card Center for Youth Program Quality. So they're a national service provider around social emotional learning.
I understand that, but the people from our district that are running the program, interacting with the students after school, are they all trained in SEL?
So they have provided, were provided some training through Ms. Casey, but again, this will be another opportunity to enhance their skills.
So will they continue to get more training as they're
Yes.
going through this process?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Excellent. So actually, so I just had a couple of questions. When we report the data, I'm assuming that it's anonymous?
Yes.
All right. And if there was, for some reason, a parent wanted to opt out of having their children participate, they could?
Absolutely. Yep. So through the agreements that the parents will always have the right not to participate.
That's excellent. So, and actually, and I have, I kind of worked a little bit with Ms. Casey in the past as a volunteer, and she is a great, fantastic, she runs a really tight ship and a great program, and I'm very supportive of the 21st Century program. So I kind of think that if she's vouching for this project, it's probably pretty exceptional.
Yeah. We're looking forward to the results. Again, I think it's a part of, kind of ironic, this is about continuous improvement study, but this is a way for us to continuously improve on how we collect data, plan, and move forward.
Excellent. Are there any more questions from any committee members? All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to, I move to recommend to the Board of Education the approval of the 21st Century After-School Study conducted by Mathematica at no cost to the district.
I will second.
So seconded by Ray Garino, and we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
And Jessica Brown votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Excellent. Next up on our agenda is an update on the SAS testing. So we have some info in our packet here on that.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, again. This is really just an update. There's no motion on this. There'll be a communication going out within the next week from Mr. Parker and myself to the school community, especially students in grades three to eight, around our spring SAS testing. And it's going to be a little confusing. So we wanted to bring it up tonight, just so that everyone's aware. So the testing window for SAS actually is currently open, and it will run through June 11. But we know with hybrid and remote students that it's really going to be difficult to run our assessment system like we did in previous years. For instance, we have a hybrid, students coming in on two days a week, Cohort A, and students coming in Cohort B, two days a week. And we also have remote students. And so the guidance from the Department of Education is that students must come into school to take the test. So if you're a remote student and you're going to participate in state assessments, you must take the test in school. Yep. So I'm watching the other faces around the screen, and I'm the only one on the screen, and that's the confusing aspect of it. So there's a letter that's going to go out, and the guidance from the Department of Education is that they are not requiring students who are remote students to come into the building solely for testing purposes. So just to really confuse us more, so if you want to take the test and you're a remote student, you need to come into school. But the Department of Education is telling us, you don't have to come into the school if it's only for testing purposes. So a parent, what do I do? So a letter is going to be out, coming out saying, if you want to participate and you're a remote student, please, you know, contact your school, and we'll schedule accordingly. Different this year in the past, as you know, with the SR requirements for testing, we need to have 95% participation rate. This year, that's going to be waived. So if you're a remote student, or you're a student that's, or a student that is hybrid, and a family decides to exempt from the test, they can complete the form like they would every year. The difference this year is that the district will not be held accountable for the 95% participation rate. So it's going to be causing a little confusion over the next couple of weeks of how do we schedule it? Do I have to take the test? If I choose not to take the test, where do I find the forms? So we just wanted to bring it up today. Again, Mr. Parker and I will be sending out a letter by the end of this week, along with the building principals, stating to the fact that state testing is coming up. However, if you choose not to take it, we'll have a hyperlink in the letter where parents can actually find the waiver form, and they can complete the waiver form, and it'll go back to the building principal. If they do choose to take the test, then they just need to contact the building principal, and we'll schedule them accordingly. So we just wanted to update the board or the Curriculum and Evaluation Meeting Subcommittee today, because it is going to be confusing. There's going to be questions out there, and so we wanted to start the discussion tonight. We have another meeting with the building principals tomorrow to answer more questions, because scheduling is going to be really difficult. And we won't be able to actually have solid schedules until we actually know who is going to participate in the testing. For example, what does it look like testing in third grade at New Sales, New Cirls, right? So we have Cohort A, Cohort B. You know, in Cohort A, there's only 10 students in the class. They test in on Monday and Tuesday of a week, and then Cohort B is testing on a different day. So it's just going to be a lot of testing, a lot of convoluted schedules that come out from building administrators. And then how do we incorporate remote students to test if they're coming into the building while not cross-pollinating, cross-contaminating cohorts as well? So there's going to be a lot of juggling parts and a lot of schedules. So we just want to make sure that the Curriculum and Evaluation Subcommittee is aware of these letters that are going out. And then again, there'll be a report to the full board, because there will be questions that will be coming down the pike, especially if you're watching the news. Why are we taking state tests this year? We know there's been learning loss. What's the purpose of this? It is still a requirement that we have to participate in state testing. So as we're trying to get more students back into the building, they're coming back in the middle of state testing.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Yes, Ms. Gilio?
It's not specific to this. It actually is going back to the 21st Century program, but just based on the fact that I suspect we'll have additional questions about that from our full board when we meet. Would it be possible for you to have the information on the agreement and the data collection that you mentioned you could provide? I think that would, that would probably be better if we had that information available for that meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did you have any questions about this, Ms. Gilio? Or are you ready? And Mr. Garino, any questions about the SAS update?
I'm all set.
I did have a couple of questions, just to clarify, mostly for parents. So if you've got, I'm glad that they're waiving the participation mandatory, the 95% participation, because that seems like it would be difficult under these circumstances. So if you are a remote student and you want to, you do not want to come in the building to take the exam, are you required to fill out that waiver form, or are you automatically waived unless you opt in?
No, you need to complete the exemption form. That's online.
Okay, excellent. Let's see. The second question is, how long does the test usually take?
Depends if it's the ELA or math, but you can expect to take, it's about a 90-minute session to be on the safe side. And there's about six sessions. So thank you.
And that was going to be, actually, my next question was, do they take them all on the same day? I'm guessing if they're 90 minutes each, kids are not taking them all at once.
Yeah. I mean, it's, especially with our abbreviated school day, we don't want students coming in, especially elementary or three through eight students. That's, if they take two tests a day, that's a long day of testing, and that's not healthy.
All right. Thank you. I guess I don't have any more questions this time. Ms. Oden, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I have a question. Much like the free and reduced lunch forms, we're having a hard time getting all parents to respond to that. What happens if we get no response whatsoever from a parent?
That's a great question. So I think we're going to have to do a lot of work. Right now, it's, if there's no exemption form that comes back, we're assuming that that parent or that child is going to take the test. And so if they're absent on a day or were scheduled, I'm sure the building principals, guidance councils will be contacting that family to say, especially on a day of testing, to say, you know, "Mr. Andre, I noticed that your son wasn't in school today. He was, you know, it's a testing day. Is there something wrong?" And then we'll go from there, and then the parents can, hopefully that will prompt them to complete the forms. But we're assuming if they don't pass in or submit the exemption form, that they are testing, and without the exemption form, that that student will be scored as a zero and nonparticipation, as opposed to an exemption.
Wow. That seems like it's going to be difficult. That's going to create some problems.
It's going to be a lot of work, and that's why I think I put it on the agenda. It's going to be building principals, our guidance counselors, social workers, they're going to be busy doing a lot of work around testing and chasing forms. But I have full confidence that we'll make it work.
Right.
Be able to support the families in their decisions.
I agree with you, and I thank you for letting us know this is coming up, because I think we will hear some feedback from this, from families and from schools. But thank you so much for letting us know.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the update on that. The next item of business, I think we'll move on in the agenda for all other questions, is the 2021 Curriculum Priority
So this portion of the agenda is more about celebrations and conversations, quite honestly. So I must commend Sorry, just working on two screens so I can see you and any questions that you're asking. But this is really an update to not only the board, but the public and all the hard work that our educators, our administrators, our coaches are doing to address learning over the last year. So there's a lot of conversations on what is learning loss and how are we going to measure it? What are our assessments? I must say that, and I've said this in a few meetings, that since last March to today, when I hear the word "loss," the only time I want to hear "loss" is when we're talking about, and working this hard, is about our weight loss. I can't think of a time that our students, our educators, our administrators have been working so hard. So when I hear and try to equate loss and how hard they're working, it just doesn't add up. It's just, I think we've had a lot of celebrations and successes over the last year that we need to recognize. So while we are not where we need to be in the scope and sequence, our students, our educators, our administrators are thriving in different areas that haven't been measured before, and so we need to give them a lot of kudos. So when we talk about learning loss, I heard it from one of our coaches, and I think it's our new kind of terminology, is really not what's the learning loss, but what's the unfinished learning? And I think that really changes the perspective on how we approach. So we're not having deficit thinking, but really asset thinking. What have we learned that we can build upon? What comes next? So we've had a lot of conversations at Central Office with the building administrators, with our coaches. And Dr. McKinney has been doing a wonderful job spearheading this endeavor around what are our key end-of-year priorities from March to June 2021. So I just want to run through this quick PowerPoint, and again, really frame how we're thinking and show you the great work that's happening with our educators, administrators, and coaches. So over the course of the next six months, where really every conversation we're having is around how are our students performing? What are the areas of strength and growth, and how we respond to the plan? So this coincides to the presentation that Mr. Parker and I did last week in our curriculum budget around those four essential questions. What do we want all students to know and be able to do? How are we going to measure it? What are we going to do if the students don't get it? And what do we do if the students get it? So over the course of the last four months, these have been our priority questions with our administrators and our coaches and teachers. So in our PLC meetings on Fridays, or in afternoon meetings or morning meetings with our teachers, they've been reviewing this data. They've been monitoring curriculum, instruction pacing, and ongoing assessments. They've been meeting together as teachers, grade levels, and departments, both within buildings and across buildings and across levels. Elementary have been meeting with middle school teachers. Middle school teachers have been meeting with high school teachers. So we've had a nice opportunity for vertical and horizontal articulation around curriculum and instruction. And lastly, we've been having a lot more meetings around formative data and performance indicators relative to the priority scans, and I'll get to that in a second. But people, people have been asking in board meetings, what is the data that we need to review? In this year, more than any other year, it's formative data. So that's those daily data points that actually drives the instruction for the next day. Unfortunately, or fortunately, depends how we want to look at it, is that there haven't been too many standardized assessments this year for quarterly benchmarks. Last year, the district used iReady. We moved away from iReady. And then also for, say, at our elementary level, we would have reading assessments that a teacher does one-on-one with students, and it's a standardized format. It's really difficult to do that virtually. So we haven't been conducting a lot of running records. So we've really been relying on formative data, that daily interaction with our students to drive our instruction, again, to identify what are those priority areas for the remainder of the year. Along those lines, we've been looking at our strengths and areas of strength and growth. In our conversations, we've been determining areas of strength and growth, determining resources for improvement or professional development, and making a plan for short and long term. And what we mean by that is that we're planning for, what are the interventions and the knowledge that students need to demonstrate between now and June, the immediate? What is opportunities for summer learning? If we offer summer school for students, so summer learning, but also summer learning for our educators, what type of professional development can we administer over the summer months? And more importantly, what are those gaps that we need to address September forward? So we're looking at three distinct timelines, and actually able to chunk it out, so that we're not overwhelmed. What are those short-term goals that we need to know and be able to do by June? And how do we measure it? What are we going to do in the summer? And then what are we going to do for September forward? So we've been able to compartmentalize, again, not to overwhelm, create more stress, but in doing so, we're able to create actionable items and measurables that we can act upon. What I want to do here is actually show you some of the work that's going on in the PLC meetings. So hopefully we'll connect. Where did we go? So this is our middle school in one of their department meetings. Let me make this.
Mr. Andre, or Dr. Andre, I think you might have to unshare this particular screen and reshare the one you clicked on.
And that's why I had two screens. The yellow ones show the other PowerPoint. So I didn't have to ask, do you see the new one? Thank you for mentioning that. So this is an example of the work that our middle school science team has been doing. They've been, again, looking at where do they need to be in three years? What are those power standards in the unfinished learning? I'm not going to go through the whole slide, but I want to give the Subcommittee and the public the information or the knowledge of how hard our teachers and administrators and coaches are working. the information or the knowledge of how hard our teachers and administrators and coaches are working to address learning through the, through the pandemic, to recognize where those strengths and weaknesses are and gaps in our curriculum, you know, our student learning, and then what are we going to do moving forward? So again, this is a middle school science department meeting. So you can see what their units of study and the scope of sequence in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, some of the standards that they're addressing. How many days of instruction that they have left? What are they going to cover? Materials not covered. Make a summary of what's the unlearn NGSS standards. And then how do they approach it moving forward? So again, I don't want to go into it, but I just wanted to highlight and really celebrate our teachers and how, this hard work going on. I know in some of the board meetings, there's questions about how do we know, what's the data that we can present? So what we can present is the conversations going on, looking at our curriculum, seeing where those gaps are. And then how does it spiral into next years and how do we address it? All too often, we look, when we look at our data, we go, we drill right down to the student and say, how are we going to intervene at the student level? And that's important. However, right now, we're almost at a tier two intervention. This is really about curriculum. In order to make the biggest impact in the shortest amount of time, we really need to assess where our curriculum is. And that's what this process is, and that's the data that's going to come out by June to say, where are those gaps in our curriculum? And then moving forward, how do we address it? Any questions before I show the next document? And I'll just kind of slip through here.
There's anyone, anyone from the committee, just speak right up or Ms. Oden? All right, I guess we're good. So I just, so just to clarify, the goal of using the daily form of formative data that we're looking at each day is to prioritize the core standards of what we need to know by the end of this year. Modify our curriculum as such, but also leave at the end of the school year with some really good information for the teachers, the next grade level, to know where they need to start.
Excellent summary. You did it better than I could. So that's exactly it. And then, so while we're looking at tier one and tier two curriculum, that formative assessment will also give us information on how do I have to intervene at the student level? But we, we can't intervene at 180 students individually at a time. It's easier to address one of those themes and commonalities that are coming out to, to make those interventions in the curriculum or assessments moving forward because it's a bigger population. If it was only one or two students that were failing, then we would intervene at the student level. But right now, we know there's holes in the curriculum, so it's easier to address the holes in the curriculum as opposed to schedule an individual intervention sessions with each student, you know, across the district. If that makes sense. And so the, the second document I want to show you, again, celebrating our teachers, is what, some of the work going on at the elementary level. And this one is really overwhelming. And so this is a spreadsheet on math and the ELA standards from K through five. And I won't walk, walk you through it, through it. But what we're doing in PLCs at every grade level and every building in our elementary schools in their PLCs, they're having the conversations and we'll go to a third grade. And they're going through a third grade curriculum and looking at the standards that are addressed in a, in a year and asking, did we address this? Do we have data on it? Is it important? Is it a, is a standard that we're going to teach all the way through or is it going to spiral into the next year? So each teacher has a voice in this process to say, did I teach it? How did I, did I assess it? And is it a power standard that we have to absolutely teach by the end of the year? Or is this one that it's more of a, a supporting standard that can be addressed in the following year? So a couple of weeks ago, when we were having the conversations about the social studies, curriculum work and the assessments, we knew it was really important that we had teachers' voice and input. So each teacher in the elementary schools is going through this process and reviewing their standards so that they can make informed decisions. From a district level, what's really interesting is since all of our elementary schools are going through the same process, myself, Mr. Parker, Dr. McKinney, our coaches can actually compare and contrast each elementary school to see where they were in the scope and sequence. Is bicentennial further along than Led Street? Is Led Street doing better than Amherst in their scope and sequence? Because at the end of the day, we, we need to make sure that all Nashua third grade students have the same expectations. So this has really been a powerful professional development exercise for us. So it's, again, it's not, we're not going to get the data on how are students performing on a standardized test this year. But really, it's a process or review in our curriculum and our, our instruction that's going to make our decisions for, what do we have to address in the summer? And then what do we have to address next year? So it's, it's been really powerful professional development for our teachers, our, our coaches. And it's nice, a nice also curriculum audit for central office. I just want to highlight a couple of things just so that you can look at it a little differently. So here in line eight, we have this, the Common Core literacy RF 3.3, Greek and all that other good language to everybody. What you'll see is that if I go to grade four, and that says, I can find and tell meanings of most common prefixes and suffixes. If I go to grade four, we have a common, it progresses to the next level. So 4.3, I can read unfamiliar words that have more than one syllable. So in grade three, they were talking about prefix, prefixes and suffixes. And then in grade four, it's really multi-syllabic words. So you can see how they build on each other. So if we did not really get all the way through teaching prefixes and suffixes, it'll be addressed again in grade four. So there won't be that much learning loss because that is standard to be addressed again more thoroughly in the following year. If that makes sense. So even though you might see, we didn't teach that all the way through, we know that it'll, it'll be built upon in the following year and we can reteach that skill. So again, this update is really to highlight and celebrate all the great work our educators, administrators are doing and our coaches are doing to address unfinished learning. I'm not going to say learning loss. It's really that professional development going on and they're coming out with some great information. This process will be concluded probably in about two weeks so that we can really start developing our summer program in our curriculum decisions for next week. So I'm really, I feel like a proud person over here. I, I'm really so pleased with the work that our teachers are doing. I couldn't be happier. So any questions on the, just our unfinished learning in our, in the work that our teachers are doing?
Any of the committee members or board members that are present have a question? Nope. Well, I got to tell you, I think, I like the way you're looking at this as the concept of the unfinished learning. And additionally, taking this as an opportunity to look district-wide at the equity between teaching models we're using. And I am continually impressed with our curriculum coaches, our principals and our teachers who are keep modifying their curriculum on the fly to making sure we're getting, the students are getting that central, those central knowledge bases that they're building blocks they're going to need at the next level. I think, I mean, it's been going on now for a year. They just had to keep flipping and moving and being so flexible. And I got to commend them and I like the fact that the administration is looking at it from that perspective. And then taking the data that you can learn from and looking at it and modifying it for the future, for a future plan. So that's really great. All right. So I think it's nothing else from the rest of the committee. Any more questions or anything else to add, Mr. or Dr. Andre?
No, just a word of to the, to the parents or students out there who might be listening. I know that in some board meetings, we hear about we're losing students. Again, I want to commend our guidance counselors, our teachers, our administrators, our classroom teachers. I can't express enough of how many relationships they built with students in different ways. You know, over the course of the last years, parents and guardians have been in the classroom. There's been daily conversations with, between parents and guardians and teachers because they're on the Zoom call with them. They're in their classrooms, literally. So I think we've really deepened a lot of relationships. That being said, we know there's a, there are a handful of students who are not engaged. And we have a small amount of time. Our guidance counselors have been reaching out to families. So if you could help us, if you know of families that haven't been contacted or they feel like they're slipping through. I was at Nashua High School South today and I know the guidance counselor is saying, we know exactly where the kids are, but we need help reconnecting them. So if there are families that we, you know, sometimes we hear from the community that we're losing students. If you know those students, give us their names. We'll go out there, we'll knock on their doors, we'll bring books, we'll make sure that there's, that they'll get across the stage if they're a senior. I know Mr. Richards is, will do anything as power, same thing with Mr. Burns. So if there's names of students slipping through the cracks, please let us know. But I have to really commend again our guidance counselors, our administrators, our teachers for reaching out to make sure no one is slipping through the cracks. And they've been working harder than ever to, to form those relationships. So I, again, I just want to commend them for all their hard work.
Thank you. I think that's great and I, you know, we're, we got to bring this community together. And I like the idea of, you know, if you can lend a, lend your neighbor a hand a little bit, it's worth it in the long run. Well, thank you very much. This has been really informative. Any more questions on any other subjects from any of the members today? All right, yes, Mr. Garino?
I, I just wanted to say it real, real quick. You already said, said it very well, Madam Chair. But I, I agree that teachers have done a great job adapting and making the best of the situation. And I, and I like, I like the, the fact that the district is going to reconnect with those students that have kind of fallen through the cracks because of the situation, not, not, not because of anyone's fault, because, because of the situations. It's, it's not easy keeping those connections rather than make, make people feel like they're being penalized if they're not, you know, but instead reaching out and reconnecting with them. So I, I think that's a, that's a, that's the positive way to go. And I, I know from a personal, just from a, on a personal level, how, how the teachers, how well the teachers have made those personal connections with their students remotely. Because my daughter did it in her senior year last year and I, I watched it happen. So I, I agree with what Dr. Andre said and our teachers deserve, and staff deserve our respect and admiration and thanks for, for what they've done. So.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Excellent. Well, I guess if, at 6:45, that's pretty exciting. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Garino, seconded by Ms. Gilio. Mr. Garino, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Gilio?
Yes.
Yes, Jessica Brown votes yes. And we are adjourned at 6:45. And once again, the curriculum committee gets the trophy for the fastest meeting.